Call this regular meeting of the Southwest Looking Board of Education Order. We'd like to recognize all of our visitors, both here and online. If you please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance.
This is Ms. Brown's kindergarten class at Kirkersville Elementary.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Jones, if we could call the roll, please.
Mrs. Moore?
Here.
Mrs. Spindler?
Here.
Mr. Vincent?
Here.
Mr. Zani?
Here.
Mrs. Engle?
Here, we have a quorum, we can continue. Public participation, we have one for public participation. Mrs. Spock, who could come to the microphone, please? If you will give your name and address. Mr. Jones will give you five minutes and he will be keeping the time. They'll let you know when thirty seconds are up. Okay?
Yeah, my name is Leslie Spock and I live in Harrison Township residing at 132 Autumn Drive. I'm here, I am the Walking Memorial Athletic Association President, which is known as the Athletic Boosters. And I was recently the chair of the twenty-two, twenty-twenty Fall Craft Show, which was our thirty-third annual event sponsored by the Walking Memorial Athletic Boosters. I'm here tonight to publicly share our gratitude to Dr. Casey Perkins. It was with her guidance and support that we were able to continue with this craft show last month. As you're aware, our organization raises funds to support all athletic programs and like many others, we face challenges this year. Two of our three major events were canceled, including the B.W. Show and the Street Fair. With limited attendance at our fall sporting events, the proceeds from the concession stands has also decreased. We still strive to support our sports program, which includes the purchase of the twenty-twenty-one banners given to our seniors who participate in sports. This is a tradition we wanted to continue. With Dr. Perkins' guidance, we were able to offer a safe event that included a decrease in craft vendors, a decrease in attendees at the door at one time. And we were able to still offer Nancy's famous chicken noodles to our guests to go. While things might have looked and felt a bit different, it was a successful show, raising much needed funds for our programs. Most importantly, with Dr. Perkins' support, we were able to continue this local favorite fall event for many years to come, and we know we can do it safely. We'd also like to thank one of your own members, Candy Engle and her husband, who worked the door all day, ensuring that everyone who entered was healthy, as well as allowing the right amount of people in the door at one time. We also had four-year parents who volunteered, forty-five of them, to make this success event, a successful event. We also appreciated the support of our new A.D. Jake Perkins. He knew how important it was for us to continue this event and he worked hard to make it successful as well. We also hired some of our service personnel, including kitchen help and janitorial service, and they were definitely an asset to us and we thank you for allowing us to do that. I'd also like to take some moments to thank some local businesses who want to go beyond working with us. As the show date approached, as you know, many of the numbers of COVID cases increased. We felt it could hurt our attendance and this caused us to rethink our expectations. And I just wanted to create a catering and it was Candyland accepted a reduced order days before the event without us taking penalty. White Feather Farms and Witsy took return on unused products, which really helped us to be as successful in our proceeds. Dixon Realty allowed us to use our trailer to serve hot chocolates to people standing in line because they had to wait in line to move it to get in. And the local Suzanne Hayes helped us with the online advertising because we didn't want to use all our funds, you know, just in case we wanted to raise enough money for our sporting events. We appreciate her help as well. And the several businesses who posted signs in their yards and parents. When the guests and vendors approached me to thank me for having the show, I shared with them I couldn't have done without the support of our administration. And several of them wanted me to tell you thank you as well, so we appreciate that as well. Most of them said they scheduled to do thirty or forty shows a year and ours is the only one that they were able to do, so they appreciate that fact as well. So on behalf of the Walking Memorial Athletic Association, I'd like to thank Dr. Perkins again for assisting us, guiding us and supporting us to have a safe, safe and successful Walking Memorial Craft Show. And finally, as an organization, we look forward to opening up the new high school and the updated sports complex. And we're hopeful that we can continue hosting this event and we'd be excited to have the craft show be one of the first community events in the High School.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. We need a motion to adopt the agenda as printed, please. So moved. Any discussion? All right, Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Engle?
Yes. Passes. Presentation, Food Service Status and Compliance Report.
Hi everyone, can you hear me?
You can.
We can.
Okay, thanks for allowing me to present tonight and my name is Cindy Pickering and I'm the food service supervisor. I'm excited to share with you guys an updated what's been going on, as well as giving you the compliance report that we have to do annually. So if you could advance to the next slide. That's fine, just to start off, that picture that you see there, that's our Kirkersville crew. That's Amy, Cheryl and Sally. And one of the middle, Cheryl, she is a retired police officer. She's been helping us out with something, they were just having some fun there on Halloween time. But I wanted to start out with a recap of the end of last year, just to kind of let you know where we've been. So as you know, in March, when COVID hit, we went ahead and started serving remotely to the community. We picked several different locations around the community and adjusted those to try to get more people each week. Unfortunately, our turnout wasn't great. We had between sixty-three and a hundred and ninety families show up each week, which is very low. And so obviously, our numbers drastically dropped starting in March, which it did for many districts around, based on that. Thankfully, this August, we were able to start back up in school and we were serving both in school and still taking care of our remote kiddos. It was a huge blessing that in September, we were able to go free for everybody, so that helped us drastically. We knew coming into this year, it was going to be a big challenge as far as twenty percent of our students were going to not be in the school. So it's going to be harder to feed them. And then our middle school and high school students, we had a lot of them leaving early or coming in late, so they didn't have the opportunity to have breakfast and lunch with us. And then parents, their reservation with COVID being at school. And then all of a cart was going to look different, so we knew we had a lot of challenges. So it actually worked out wonderfully that they were able to make it free for everybody, because that made our numbers boost up, which we'll see here in a minute. But we did start out, we have served five days a week. We're also serving our remote kids that were, that were to us, we were doing that, we were doing that on Wednesdays out of the high school. And we were probably getting about a hundred and ten families each week coming for that. Our K through five buildings, we're delivering all their meals to the classrooms each day. So that was something completely different for those cooks. They, and I think in the first month, one of the cooks told me they lost seven pounds just walking through the buildings because they're so spread out all through the day. So their job looked a lot different. And then grade's born up, we still did all of our middle school and high school. Of course, we're still using the cafeteria, but it looked a lot different. No salad bar and then all the different COVID regulations for how you can serve. The kids aren't allowed to reach in anything, they're not allowed to serve themselves on anything, so that changed it up quite a bit. I just want to touch quickly on the staff. I couldn't ask for a better group of food service ladies, they do an amazing job and they're, like I said, their jobs have evolved in the last eight months hugely, probably three or four different times. And they've just done a great job of offering ideas and coming up with solutions and making it work. The elementaries, I know, they, I went over there right after we announced them delivering and they were decorating their carts and they had these huge maps that they printed out, trying to figure out the most efficient ways to get around the school. The middle school and high school were coming up with the ways that they can serve now with the new COVID regulations, how to display the food out for the kids. The high school was simultaneously serving their kids in school, plus preparing their remote lunches. So it's been a lot of different changes that were at them and they have done a really good job with that, which I'm thankful for. Next slide. So as I said in the spring, we did, we did the, we tried the remote with the parents picking it up and it didn't seem to be the best way for parents. We really needed to find out something to do differently, to get more participation, feed more kids and crank out more meals. So we came up with this remote food delivery where, again, we're so free to all students until the end of the year. So we sent out a survey asking parents to sign up and we would deliver meals via the buses once a week, instead of parents having to come and pick them up. I checked it about fifteen minutes ago and we're up to over a thousand one hundred and sixty families that have signed up for that. So that tells me that this was definitely probably the way to go, because more people are going to take advantage of this opportunity. They seem to like that better. So the plan is, again, it's going to depend on how many, how many more we get, because we have to be able to keep up with that volume. But if we had, if it stopped where it is now, we had a thousand one hundred and sixty and we did seven meals, we're looking at over eight thousand meals that our staff would be putting out. We're used to putting out about nine thousand meals a week, so we're very close to what our normal count would be, which is what we're going for. And we'll probably be adding, I assume, you know, everyone's not going to sign up by the deadline, so we might be adding some more later as the time goes. That picture there is actually at the high school, when we were doing our remote handouts there, one of the Wednesdays, that's Carmen standing out there handing out meals. Next slide. This one just shows our comparison, I wanted to compare the last full month we had, which is October, compared from last year to this year, so you could kind of see where we're at. So the lunches last year have gone up a little bit, it's actually even gone up even more in November. But if you look down at the bottom in the red and green where the totals are, we were doing seventeen twenty-three a day as a district and we're now up to eighteen fifty-three. And then our breakfasts have doubled, so we went from five hundred and two to one thousand, which is really good. So a lot of kids are eating breakfast this year. That picture is of our middle school staff working. Next slide. I just wanted to share this with you, this is just our current eligibility statistics showing our pre and reduced population. It's about the same as last year, probably a little bit higher. But again, remember, once we went to free, we had a hard time getting people to actually fill out the pre-reduced applications, because they were already free, so they didn't feel the need to. But unfortunately, we stopped to do it because that's what we use to be able to waive school fees. So we still did get a lot in. And that picture there you can see is the high school, where the food is served a little bit differently. Everything is either cupped up or covered up, or the kids can just pick it up and go. Whereas before, these might have had like, you know, hot food or cold food, and where the kids might scoop some things out. So everything is already prepared for them to just kind of grab and go. Next slide. This one, the picture on the left is at an elementary. You can see this is kind of what they do on a daily basis, they have the meals and they have these styrofoam, kind of clam shells that they put together and they prepare all the food in the morning. The teachers give them the count of what the students will happily are eating, which option student would like, and then they start preparing it. And Lisa's back there with the cart ready to load up and take off and start delivering. On the right-hand side is our patascola staff and they just sent that Thanksgiving picture today. And then as far as monitoring, one thing that we've been hit with is, is as you can see in the grocery stores now, is the COVID shortages with products that are coming out. So not only are some companies not producing some of their products, but a lot of the school districts are trying to use the grab and go or things that you can easily take out from a little or two classrooms, so those products are at a shortage. So therefore, products are a shortage, so the price goes up. Price also is going up because of that packaging. We are having to package almost everything, whereas before you could just stick it on a tray and that's it. But now we have to vegetable or package in a bag and to another thing, so it's a different, more on our costs than they used to be last year. Next slide. And this is just the food service compliance report that I gave you last year as well, just kind of letting you know that we are following the guidelines still with school nutrition. There have been some waivers that have been placed because there are some times where we can't get things that we're supposed to have and they are being leaned up against on those, but we are still following our nutrition standards and our different meals that we have to have and the options. Next slide. This one I tried to highlight for you, some of the differences. So due to COVID, we're supposed to have three flavors of milk, but our vendors don't have three flavors of milk this year. They have littleed it down, we have the white and chocolate and that's all we can get. USDA has already approved that milk waiver, so we do not have to stick with that at this time, we just don't have the opportunity to be able to do that. And then down at the bottom, offer versus serve, obviously with remote, we can't stand there and ask every parent if they want a vegetable or fruit. We do try to give them some options to be able to do that, but we can't do it the same way we can do it in the building. And they have given us flexibility on that. But we are going to, with the remote meals that we serve, we are going to do, make sure there's always fruits and vegetables in it and then they can also take the milk and the orange juice as well. Next slide. That's it, that's Carmen and I telling you guys thank you and we appreciate your support. And do you guys have any questions for me?
Can I say something, Mary?
Your superintendent, I guess so.
Well, I just want to make sure you can hear me. So I just want to personally thank Cindy and all of her staff, because I feel like they've been very, very adaptable during this time. We keep shifting things and changing and they've all really rose to the occasion and are really out there kicking butt and serving kids and doing so with smiles and, you know, working really hard. So I just am really proud of everybody coming together during this time, you know, from last spring all the way to where we're at today. So kudos to them.
Well, thank you, it's our pleasure.
I just have to say something real quick too. So today was the first day two of my kids could get out of quarantine and go back to school. And they rushed home today to speak to me through the door and knocked on the door and it was, "Mom, how are you feeling? Are you okay?" It was, "Mom, we had Thanksgiving today, it was so good." He's telling the middle school that they absolutely loved it and the roles, my son is like, he would die for them.
Those are good.
School roles have been good since I was in school.
Any other questions?
Just a few, I saw that they have to sign up by today, are we able to extend that at all if the family were to sign later on?
So yes and no, they definitely, we will definitely be able to accommodate them at some point. But we had to have a cutoff because the transportation department then needs to be able to put all these kids into a bus route. So we have, you know, we had, half of our kids were already on bus routes, but we have a lot of kids that never rode the bus before, but they want food. So we now have to put them on a bus route. And we've got, you know, Friday and then Monday, Tuesday next week, and then we want to go live the following week. So the transportation department has been very willing to help with this and do this, but it is going to take them some time. So we had to have some cutoff. So what we'll do is, the cutoff is tonight for the first week, but then I'll just have, I'll just be putting people on and communicating with the transportation department, adding them on probably for the following week.
I have a really stupid question. Is the white milk, is it like a two percent or a one percent or is it whole milk?
It's a one percent.
Okay, good, thank you.
And the meals are free for the remainder of the school year, right?
That's correct, they extended it. It was supposed to be through the end of December or, they said or until money ran out, but now they said it is through the end of the school year. Anything else?
Thank you, thank you very much.
For all the hard work you've been doing.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
All right, we'll move on to request to speak on agenda items, Teamsters Local 413. Southwest Looking Education Association. All right, we need approval of minutes, we need a motion to approve the minutes from October twenty-second and November twelfth.
I'll move approval. I'll second.
Any discussion? Mr. Jones?
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Engle?
Yes. Motion passes. All right, financial report, we need a motion to approve the report from the treasurer, please.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Jones?
For the month of October thirty-first, it's a fairly rich team month. One thing I want to bring up, and I mentioned in the previous email, was particular second quarter, we can tax element, which was delayed because of the COVID-nineteen. And it did come in slightly higher, about eight thousand higher than we anticipated, which is a great thing. But that anticipation or estimate was a five percent reduction from last year. So with this coming in right now, we're still looking at about two point six percent reduction. But still, that'd be pretty good, that's all we got. This is kind of how it happened with the Great Recession, is we lost about ten percent one year and it just bounced back to next year. That's how we have it kind of forecasted to in the future, so. But again, it was a fairly rich team month and nothing out of the ordinary. I'd be glad to answer any questions you have.
Any questions? All right, Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Engle?
Yes. Motion passes. Need a motion to approve the Personnel Consent Calendar, items A through H, one or all of those?
Motion to approve item H, A, or items six A through H.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Engle?
Yes. Need that motion passes. There are seven business items. We'll probably take one or all, one or some of those together maybe?
You do A and B together.
A and B, yeah, let's do.
We do A through C probably.
We deleted C, yes?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so. It didn't.
It's not gone on my mind.
It's not on mine either.
I'll refresh.
Yeah, refresh, it's like deleted.
Refresh didn't help buy something at Best Buy today, but.
All right, how about a motion for A and B? Seven A and B.
Motion to approve seven A and B.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Engle?
Yes. That passes?
It did, thank you.
All right, and how about seven C, a motion to approve and then we can discuss?
Motion approval seven C.
I'll second that.
Go ahead, Kayden, I'm just kidding. This is the second part of the bleacher, the athletic facility bleacher project. What we have here is the bleachers, hopefully you've all had a chance to look at the bleachers, bleachers and the disposal. So we're using what's called Sourcewell Cropping and Purchasing Program. They went ahead and, they went ahead and nationwide bid out all the bleachers. And then Dan Clayton wants, one or two vendors selected by them to be their award. So that's who we use, that's who Gar Miller used to basically do what's considered design build. They designed it, we worked it, we talked about it. Myself and Bob and Jake and Mark Tech were all involved in looking at the bleachers. So they put together a price, this is to install the bleachers, this is not like the more concrete part of it. This will be installed the pillars and the bleachers themselves, there'll still be some more work, concrete underneath them through a full concrete pad and stuff that's outside this cost.
But it does include the, if I wasn't mistaken, it does include the press box, right?
Yes, it does include the press box. They won't include wiring up to it, but we have to do that part of it. But we know specifically what it includes, doesn't include, and we think the price is real competitive. We're all pretty happy with it. So the total price is seven hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. There was an option for the roof canopy that goes at the very top of the press box, something, Mr. Perkins, my Mrs. Perkins, Mr. Perkins requested that we put on there. Case is lightly raining, keep the sun off, something like that, and that's nine thousand. My recommendation is to include that in the alternate total price. But again, right now, there's one change in a drawing, the fourth row of chair backseats. The very first row actually is going to be gone, that's going to be, we're going back to bleachers there, I mean, just flat seating. But we'll have the ability in the future, if we find enough demand for that, because you really want to sell seats, reserve seats. If there's enough demand, we can always add those seats back in in the future. They'll make sure it's size appropriately to be able to do that. But for right now, we're going to put that, just that flat bleacher at the first row, where you see the first row of seat. Now put us back over two thousand seats.
Okay. So the last three rows and the long, the long row facing the press box will all be seats?
That's correct.
Okay.
It says like nineteen eighty-one on there right now, but with that change, it puts us back over two thousand. There's also a little center place where people can go down and get, go to the bleach, go down to, over to the new athletic facility D two or to the concession stand. We're trying to avoid having people have to walk in front of somebody all the time. Because if not, you have almost two thousand people walking back and forth or kids running. So with that center, it at least allows people to go down and underneath the bleachers. And hopefully, that'll reduce some. It's got a very nice handicap area that's set lower than the seat, so people saying it's handicap, the first row of the regular seats will not be off. So they're actually a little bit lower, handicapped accessible. Very nice bleachers, I think everybody's pretty happy with it.
I think we thought it would be about a million, right?
Yeah, we said, we had a million dollars, about three million athletic facilities, a million for this, yes.
Okay, so do we have any idea how much concrete's going to be then?
Yeah, he was, Brian was saying, probably somewhere around fifty thousand dollars.
Okay.
There may be, athletic facility was a little over budget and we'll find out, there's some other stuff that's pushing that a little more, so money is getting actually tight. We're having a discussion about maybe we might need to make some changes to the bleacher itself in reference to making it more cheaper set bleachers possibly. Which is something we're going to look into, we don't know, because money isn't more tight. The one thing they really want to look into, we haven't found the money for yet, is a new P A system, as well as moving the controls, because right now the controls for the school board are in the old press box. That's a fiber line, so we got to pull that fiber out and run it. There's a cost associated with that and that's, may not suddenly cover his budget or not, you know, may see if we have to talk to Jake about if he has money or we might just come back and see if we use some P I contingency for that stuff. But we want to do it right the first time, that's the key, is we, you know, we don't want a press box, brand new press box, because the control is over in the old one.
No.
We don't want that P A system, the P I system is not very good. Switch it around to some other way, hire a, you know, nice P A system, those kind of things we're still looking at doing. But right now, it's just, it's getting very tight.
So will the assembly then be done after track?
It'll be done during track, so it's all going to be, that trophy will be wrecked up, but I think they'll try to have it done by July first. And I think he says it'll take six or eight weeks to put together. So the reason we have it on so early is because it's a long lead item, they have to make it all. So that way, get it made, they want to start in the spring, you know, knowing all the foundations and everything and then start putting together. So really, the athletic building, this bleacher should all be ready to go for our first time football game, which would be exciting.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So speaking of doing it right, are the reserved seats in the press box accessible?
There are no reserved seats in there, it's just for COVID.
Well, the seating area.
I don't think it is handicapped accessible, I think you have to put a, I believe you have to put an elevator in and that will be hundreds of thousands more. I don't think they can, they have the ability to put a, make that top. I can always check into it, but I think that was brought up and they said we have to put an elevator in.
It would have to be an elevator, it couldn't be a ramp?
No, that bleacher is probably sixty feet high. That'd be a really long ramp, because you could have a certain slope and stuff. You know, that's, I think that's one issue. They talked about putting a jack down by the handicap area where we can plug into, in case somebody had a microphone, the handicap can talk, other things like that. But the press box itself is not handicapped accessible without an elevator. Or if there's something that more fills, we could do, we could price it out, but it may be in a hundred and fifty, two hundred and fifty thousand dollar range. If they can even do it, they should be able to do it, it's a built concrete structure up there. For the black, that's US board. But right now, it's not.
I just imagine that you would eventually have some students that may potentially want to go into
Yeah.
media and they won't have the opportunity to call any games, that sort of thing, just my thought, my COVID thought for the day.
I do like the idea of, at a minimum, adding something down, uh, like a jack to plug into.
Yeah, he mentioned they can do that down by the handicap, he actually, actually mentioned they can do that by football field too, if we wanted.
Oh, yeah.
Something in there, a jack, where it could be wired, mics and wireless, but we thought a wireless mic could probably be sufficient, but, you know, talking about doing something like that, you know, I can see, I could talk to, to Brian Wolf and then, you know, the representative of Dan, to see what things we do to make it more handicap accessible, in case somebody wants to call a game or can't access the press box. Unless you want to go the route of a, I don't know, they can just do a plane on lift, I'm guessing probably not, but they had mentioned elevator.
Can, could you do the elevator as a alternate, and we could see what that price would be?
Yeah, we'd do anything, we'd ask, yeah, I mean, I have no problem asking that question. We come back.
I mean, just so we would.
It's going to change the design of the press box somehow, because they're about to make a door for elevator to get into.
Yeah.
I have no problem asking that question.
Please.
Let, let's, let's do it that way. And then we can make that call, maybe.
Yep.
Do you want to be late voting on this until we have the price for next meeting, or? What would afford? Because the price is going to change, so, obviously, if we choose the alternate, it'll change.
If we approve it now, and we want to change it next month, we can do that, right?
Yeah, we, yeah, that's not wrong.
I think that's always.
Then that's, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's always.
Any more questions about it?
Go ahead.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
All right, that passes. Okay, number eight, A through C, motion to approve, and then discuss.
Move to approve eight A through C.
Second.
All right.
So the first one's donations, we always appreciate those, and thank you. The third one is then now Cs, again, just timing of getting invoices then, or getting old invoices that come in, and then we have to pay, so. I asked the board to approve those, so, next one is the five-year forecast, um, trying to get it fairly quickly, um. So this is five forecasts, the law changed, we were used to follow on November first, it changed, so we have till the end of November to follow five-year forecast, that's why it's a lot way out of usual, so. Pretty much just the normal forecast, uh, as I said in the past, is this year, we have five percent reduction income tax, but then I'm kind of like five percent grow and growth from each year then on out, that's kind of like, like we did with the Great Recession, it went down one year, and then sort of grown back up, so. I anticipate it happening, because homes are still getting built, people are still moving in, um, and at this point, most of the jobs being affected by COVID nineteen are in the entertainment, restaurants, that kind of thing, so. Part of the base thing is, is the, the school foundation, is, it's basically flatlined, we just don't know what to expect, you know? Governor Wyng came in and just flatlined it for two years, still in that, well, it's a success money, but you can't use it for current expenditures, it's going to be on new expenditure essentially. We take a little bit of money for growing school district, it's a couple hundred thousand a year, so, we project hopefully keep getting that a little bit of growth with our enrollment growing, but essentially, basically, it's going to be flatlined, we just don't know what to expect coming, you know? We expect potentially, you know, with the, with the COVID, and what that do is it may flatline again next by any, with, you know, so, unless the, the new cut Patterson School Foundation Fund that comes in, um, the numbers I saw was like about a one point four million dollar increase.
Hundred percent.
So, um, that would be a wonderful help if that would actually be put in place, but, um, I foresee they're talking about phasing it over six years, so. One point four, maybe one-sixth, and then grow, you know, so, it may be a little bit, but at least we see a more of a rise than or, like that tunnel, that's a good thing. On the expense, our receipts side, the expenditure side, we're basically billing at the moment, we're billing in five new staff members every year for growth, essentially for growth. We have one new bus driver and one new aide every other year in the forecast, um, it's also the cost. But then, obviously, I have ten percent budget for insurance increases each year, now, obviously, this year, we ended up having minus three percent, which was awesome. You know, as we go every year.
Right.
Realistically, three, you know, five, ten percent is quite better off, so. Uh, the one thing with the, going back to receipts, is the property tax number that's in here, we had, this year is revaluation year, or reass, yeah, reassessment.
Assessment, yeah.
And obviously, I don't, I didn't have the numbers, so I did a forecast, I got the new numbers today, so what's in the forecast is a nine point two percent increase in the value because of revaluation. It actually came in at twenty-one point nine percent.
Wow.
So, uh, property values, um, with our school district, we're on a twenty oh four, so. Even with the revaluation, we're going to get more tax money because we're on a twenty oh four. Emergency operating, the debt, the P I, those will get reduced because of larger value, because they're based on amounts, but still, it was a large increase, a lot more than I expected. So actually, based on the numbers I got today, I'm checking on some things, uh, the property value this year was like seven hundred and seven million, it goes jumping to five hundred and thirteen million. So it's a huge jump, and the effect on the forecast is quite a bit, um. So basically, right now, what we're projecting is about four point two million dollar negative cash flow at the end of forecast. With a new number in there, it's a lot of, a lot of rebound. So, it actually, it helps the forecast tremendously. Some numbers I got didn't match some other numbers, so I'm trying to get some more clarification from the county hours office. I just didn't have time to get in the forecast, but it will definitely be in there for the May one. You see the actual effect, and we'll have a better idea of where everything comes in at that time too, but, um, the revaluation was pretty good. For new construction, I think it was, trying to go off on a head here, is about five percent increase. So, we'll get a five percent increase on school foundation and our emergency operating, or now substrate. Because now, when the substrate kicks in, so we get money for new construction, additional money over the four point five million dollars, so. I don't have that exact element over my head, on my head, I have it back in my spreadsheet, I just don't remember what that number is. We get additional money for that also. So, overall, again, back to the, right now, this forecast, we're still, we have a negative cash flow, we still got to be careful as we move on, to make sure we don't spend more than we have, we have a reserve asset covered, but again, it's hard to do in the future, you know, obviously, the cut Patterson comes in, we get to one point four million, four dollars, one point four million dollars per year more, that's going to have a significant impact on the forecast, as well as additional revenue, uh, for the property taxes. But again, we also are growing school district, and we're going to be opening up some new school, a new school building, but one additional we didn't have in the past, I do have two hundred thousand dollars in here for additional utilities costs, um, and then also local staffing for the new building, but not, not by huge amounts, so. Is there any specific question about the five-year forecast?
What's the, um, what are you hearing on the, um, timing as far as voting on cut Patterson? Are you hearing anything? I mean, are they bringing that to the floor?
I haven't heard anything.
Okay.
Have you heard anything, Casey, about that?
Sorry, I was on mute, no, no.
Yeah, I know this, it's in the Senate, I think, and maybe the House may start something, but it's in the Senate, don't hear, I think both of them don't hear, I'm sitting in the House.
Yeah.
But I have no idea what they're going, if they're going to vote on it, because again, that's a, it's a nice price tag, I think, like I said, something I saw was like two million dollars more.
Yeah.
So, you know, we're just taking our funding money in. And over six years, or something like that, so, I haven't heard when or anything. So I asked the board to approve our forecast and authorize me to submit to the High Department of Education.
Any questions for Mr. Jones?
I have a question.
Okay.
Any chance you could, um, shoot us an email with the one, one new, because you're going to do it again before May with the new numbers?
I have some clarification from the county owner, I will be updated.
Can we get a copy of that? Thank you. Now I'm done.
Okay. All right, Mr. Jones.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
I think Roger did.
I think Roger did, I had Roger down, but I didn't see that.
All right, uh, number nine, superintendent items.
So I just wanted to take a few minutes to talk about, um, obviously, COVID, and what's happening in our schools. Um, so, just to kind of give you an update as to what we've been doing behind the scenes, and what will happen the next couple of weeks. Um, as Cindy said earlier, we have almost twelve hundred kids signed up for meals, we have over a thousand, um, devices getting ready to go out. Um, actually, I believe they passed out about four hundred today, um, which leaves about six hundred or so left on Monday to pass out to our kids. And just for point of reference, um, we have a little over, once all those are passed out, we'll have a little over seventeen hundred devices out in our district, from our current remote learners to our new kids that are, um, transitioning over, so lots of technology, um, that, um, our kids are using. We, we've kind of staggered the schedule for, um, the high school and then for the K through eight. So the teachers, the kids will have two days of, um, learning that they'll be doing on their own, that their teachers already sent the, the work home, or prepared them for how they'll do that. That's going to give our teachers, um, ample time to, uh, be prepared of, for a little bit different of instruction than we had in the spring. Uh, one of the things that we felt were really important was to make sure that we were having in-person teaching on a daily basis at all three levels, so this will allow, um, for those three weeks that were off, for our remote kids to work with their teachers, um, different schedules depending on the building. Uh, the six through twelve, we're kind of following the same schedule, and then K through five are also following the same, so teachers, um, have been working and will be working diligently the next couple of days, um, in each building, depending on when the kids are done, um, to get all of that together and, you know, to be ready to go. And then, you know, the, the hope is, and the communication I keep sharing with everybody, I know there's disappointment in the community and in our families that are willing to remote, and I completely understand. Um, we are, we're doing a good job in our schools, we're doing a good job, um, with kids and staff and wearing the mask and being safe, and we're not seeing a spread. One of the most exciting things, if you can find something exciting during this time, is that when we do perform the contract tracing, we're not finding that the COVID is spreading from the initial case to other kids that are being quarantined. Um, matter of fact, I have a, um, call tomorrow, a Zoom, with the health department and county superintendents about a change in the, um, contract tracing that will be coming, um, pretty much when we return to in-person learning, so. I'm, I'm eager to hear more about that and to find out how that will impact our kids. I do believe, um, based on a little bit of information I currently have, that will be a change, um, you know, to the betterment for our kids in the district. And because, as the health department is saying, they are not finding that through contract tracing, and because of, you know, schools doing such a good job wearing the mask, they're not finding there's a problem in schools once they have an initial case. So I'm hoping that helps our kids out a little bit, and maybe eases some parents' minds. I know with the all-in, um, model, that our kids in most classes are definitely, um, closer than six feet, which always means they have to be quarantined, so, um, I will definitely report back and share, um, with you guys, as well as the community next month, um, what that means and what that looks like, so they have an idea and awareness moving forward. One of the big things, and I, and I keep saying this to parents that reach out, and I keep putting it in communication, we have to watch what we're doing, you know, when we're outside of school, the community spread is what's hurting us, and that's part of the problem we're having today. We're, we're down a lot of staffing, and that is the reason we're going remote. Um, I'm hoping over the next couple of weeks, people will have time to get healthy, um, both our kids who are self-quarantining, and, you know, our staff, maybe they're self-quarantining, maybe they're quarantining themselves, um, whatever the reason may be, I'm hoping we use this time to get healthy, we take a look, we'll be monitoring numbers, the, the team and the D O will be looking over the break, watching things closely, working with the health department, and the goal is, you know, heading on staffing to come back in January. So I'm hoping that happens, um, and I'm hoping we see, um, you know, good things happening as far as our members are concerned, so. I do think that, um, I know, you know, not everyone's excited about transitioning back to remote, but I do think we have a really good plan in place, I think the team has worked really hard with the teachers and building administrators, um, to make sure we're ready for that. So I do think parents, um, will see different things than they did last spring, um, which I hope helps a little bit, um, with the situation, and I hope we're sitting here, um, talking about this next time in a different light, and we're getting ready to come back, um, in person in January, so. Those are the things I want to share, if you guys have any questions about anything going on, or.
Yep. Questions?
That's it for me.
All right. About request to speak on non-agenda items, Ms. Coffel. If you, uh, come to the podium, give your name and address, Mr. Jones will give you five minutes time, and he will let you know when you're down to thirty seconds.
Okay.
All right.
Doug Coffel, nine oh two, Ford Bass Road, Southwest, Patasville, Ohio. There you go.
Yep.
I am representing a group of remote learner parents who would like to address the issues with the Edmonton learning system and how the district has handled remote learning families. First, let me state, we understand everyone is trying to do the best they can in this unprecedented time. While we appreciate the effort, we feel we have real concerns that need to be heard and addressed by school officials. First is communication, there has been a serious lack of adequate and timely communication from the district regarding completion fees. When we're told in the beginning, students have to be one hundred percent complete by the end of the year. On September eighteenth, an email was sent informing remote learning families that students need to be twenty-five percent complete by the twenty-fourth. This was less than a week's notice, on top of that, the students have max testing on the twenty-second and the twenty-fourth, which cut into their time to complete required coursework. At that time, they would dock attendance hours based on percentage of not completed per class. Please explain how students are expected to meet these demands in such a short amount of time. Unrealistic expectations. At the initial completion date on the twenty-fourth, students were given another three weeks to reach fifty percent. Some parents have reported their remote learners have been working fifty to sixty hours a week to reach these completion expectations. In-class students do not spend this amount of time in school each week. Many of us have watched our children stress over meeting these goals, with many unable to be there to meet them and being docked attendance hours, despite working more hours per day than their in-class peers. This has led to many remote learning students suffering undue stress and anxiety. It seems that our children are held to a different standard than those in the classroom. Edmonton curriculum, it appears to us that the curriculum remote learners are using is far more advanced than their peers in class. Many of our students have struggled to understand math as they have been given assignments without having had foundational concepts for the work they are asked to complete, they have had to use outside resources to educate themselves so they can complete the work given. Personally, my daughter has struggled with Spanish one, I have gone over lessons with her and been dumped out. What she is learning is miles above the typical Spanish one course, and certainly above what is done in the classroom. Again, it appears our students are being held to a higher standard than their in-class peers. We also feel the district has not provided sufficient help and support to your remote learners, leaving them to learn on their own. Attendance, the district has changed tactics twice for tracking attendance since the beginning of the school year. We feel there should have been a better plan following the place to help track remote learners. The Google attendance forms currently being used by the district are not perfect. Many students have encountered issues with completing the form and it not being properly processed when submitted. In closing, we would like the district to know that we feel you abandoned your remote learners, that you have failed these students and their families. The lack of adequate communication and constant last-minute changes to expectation has caused confusion and anxiety for students' families. We have seen the defeat and anxiety on our children's faces day in and day out. We urge the district to take our concerns seriously and make the necessary changes to improve the learning experience for your remote learners and their families. We urge the district to take our concerns seriously, and make the necessary changes to improve the learning experience for your remote learners and their families. Thank you for your attention, we look forward to a timely and improved communication, clear expectation, and an acceptable degree of support necessary for successful remote learning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gotta bring up a point before we I was texting back and forth with Brian Wolf. Back to Bleachers, said, uh, Wapakoneta Schools did it. In his opinion, it's gonna cost somewhere between a hundred seventy-five and a hundred eighty-five thousand dollars.
More?
More, to make a handicap assessment. Said Wapakoneta had to get a variance, because theirs came in actually two hundred five thousand. So, we're in that range, hundred fifty to two fifty, so, yeah, still, the board wants to push forward drawings, alter pricing. So I have a problem with Wolf, and Sir Jazani, it, they're bringing back a, a bid number.
What's the legality of doing it or not doing it, is there any ramifications?
Not that I'm aware of, I think multiple of them, they've got access to microphones or whatever, because Dan plays, does, they do them all over the place, they did the Grand Hills, they did Lightwoods, they did these. So it's not like it's something, but, and still, I'd say if we can afford it, it would be a great idea. You know, gives anybody a chance to get up there and call games, or see all the interworkings of the school board and media and stuff. But again, additional money, that's not, it's a bond issue, I mean, we can always do it, and then later on, get the money back through a the cop station, that's what we do once, you know, tasks like that, you know.
That's for an elevator, not a lift, right?
He didn't say what it was for, but I'm assuming that's in the range of the elevator, that's why I want, I can confirm that, but I just wanted to be with the ballpark, what he was saying.
I mean, Rick, does the decision have to be tonight, maybe some time to think about it, and have further conversations or reflection, I feel like that's kind of a big decision and a lot of money.
It probably doesn't, but it's gonna be made probably very fast, probably at least by next meeting, just because it's a long lead on it, he said making this stuff is a long lead on it, I don't know if it affects the bleachers whatsoever, it might, it won't affect the press box, but it may not affect the design of the bleachers. I just don't, I've never done it, so I don't know.
I mean, we could have a building and grounds meeting, we could discuss it, that would be my recommendation, just because I think it is a large purchase and a lot of money. And worth, uh, some additional conversation, in my opinion.
That's a break.
Hey, Brian, you got a minute?
Yeah.
Hey, uh, just real quick, we're in the middle of a debate, so you say hi to Brian.
Hi, Brian.
A quick question, the alt, the, uh, the ballpark prices you were providing for the handicap accessible, is that actually, is that an elevator? What is that?
Yes, that would be an elevator.
Okay.
Yeah, because to do a handicap accessibility for a ramp, uh, you know, you're, uh, yeah, that would just, I mean, it would, it would it would go on forever, um, yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah, I, I, if you're gonna do a handicap accessibility, I think, uh, an elevator would definitely be your best option.
Okay, does that affect the design of the bleacher itself, or just the press box?
Uh, no, it would be just the press box itself, it would be a shaft uh, that will be on the backside of the press box, and then we would, uh, where one of the windows is currently at, uh, we would just have to make that into, you know, the entrance to, to the press box from the elevator, so.
Okay, well, that's kind of
Yeah, so you'd lose, you'd lose a window.
Okay. But again, that gets us going, okay, that's what I want to know, I appreciate it.
Yeah, no problem, and, you know, a hundred seventy-five thousand, I mean, an elevator is, it is, for one stop, is eighty thousand dollars. We just did one for a church, uh, up in St. Mary's, Ohio, here where I'm from, and it was eighty-two thousand dollars, just the elevator, just the elevator. Now you have to put the foundations in, you have to know the whole shaft, which has to be out of C M U, like the concrete basement ring. And then typically, we'll want to put some sort of, like, tier, uh, other rear siding or something like that. And, uh, everything else that goes with it, so you're gonna be, yeah, you're gonna be close to a hundred seventy-five thousand.
Okay, that's what I need to know.
Okay.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Bye.
Bye.
I don't need a decision tonight about doing it, I just want a decision, do we want Burke, do we want Garnett to design it? To move forward, designing it, getting a price, that'd have to come back to the board to decide if you want to do it or not.
Kathy, is, is that you and Deb in Building and Grounds?
Yes.
Why don't y'all talk about it in there?
I'm fine with that.
Can we do that, can we have a building and grounds after everyone's out of quarantine, and make the call on the design quotes thing? Then, I mean, I know it's a quick, but we can, as soon as
As soon as Deb gets
And Casey
Yeah, I think that's fine, like I said, it doesn't affect the bleachers, so that's the long lead on it, so at least I'm less concerned about it now, because the bleachers can still be made, just the press box itself, I think it's
I mean, I'm fine with that.
We have more time to make the decision, knowing it doesn't affect the bleacher.
There we go, let's do it that way.
Right, tell me your opinion. Sorry about that.
No, that's okay.
We're all here, minus we'll take advantage of it.
Alright.
Everybody, after Deb's out of quarantine.
After Deb's out of quarantine.
Well, I said Casey too.
Yeah, I said Casey too. Alright, request to speak on non-agenda items, Teamsters Local Four Thirteen. Southwest Looking Education Association. Need a motion for adjournment.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Jones?
Mr. Venta?
Yes.
Mrs. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Spender?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes, we are adjourned at seven fifty-six.